America in two republics which stands one nation and under God and invisible with urgency and justice for all.
We have Councilman Hartback his absent tonight and Councilman Luton's ready to just now join us.
Thank you.
Freshly showered.
Freshly showered. Anything for public comment tonight?
The water is running over both sides of the bridge at the cemetery. It's nasty.
Be careful.
The whole, half a block, it's whole lot.
No public comment then, we'll have a discussion of snowmobile ordinance requested by Shirley Smith under public comment at our last meeting, so I wanted to oblige her complaint and have a discussion of the snowmobile ordinance. And I believe the basis for her complaint was she had a snowmobiler ride over her sidewalk and scrape her sidewalk or something last night, I think that's what she was saying, but that's correct. So, Bob, did you have anything, could you, you received the complaint from Shirley regarding her, the snowmobile, right? Could you refresh, or do you remember exactly? Somebody, as I recall it, the snowmobiler had scraped her sidewalk and then she called in a complaint.
Yes.
That the snowmobiles were trespassing on her property is what I recall.
Right. And I can't remember for sure if, I think Captain Hilton was the one that went. It runs in my mind that they knew who it was or whatever, but as far as damages, she, you know, didn't really want anything done as far as, I mean, because it just scraped it. Other than that, I guess I don't remember a whole lot about, about the incident.
Okay. Has she, has she complained at other times about snowmobiles or do we receive them?
Maybe once a year.
Okay. Do we receive other complaints?
Uh, yes. It's pretty hard to figure out, you know, and to catch them.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if, if it was up to me, it'd make my life a lot easier if we banned them from town, other than on Highway sixty-five or whatever to get to, you know, in order to get to the, the deals, because how do we determine whether they're recreationally riding it or if they're going directly to and from, you know, out of town? You know, it's pretty hard to do that, but that's just...
Most of them, it comes through meetings or go through the alley, so. It used to be they'd go through the front yard, the backyard, they didn't care, but...
Was hers during this, especially, that they had? That Ronnie guys had, is that when she complained or was this a different time?
No, I don't, yeah. It wasn't at any point in time when they were having anything. I mean, it's just, it's no mobile that lives in town that was going from wherever to go out of town and instead of going on the, you know, on, probably on the street because the street was bare.
You see, huh? Go ahead. Okay. I'm Gary, doing it with our Iowa River Riders.
Yeah.
Anyway, we know we had an issue when we had the fun run. We had some people from out of, from Des Moines area, they missed our signage. We'll plead guilty that we maybe didn't have it marked good enough to get to Pecotas. They went north and then came back through town, so we will address that.
How was Shirley's?
Sixth Street Southwest, so I mean, you know, as far...
So that's way down there?
Yeah. So I mean, you know, what, the, the timing and whatever, I don't think it had anything to do with anything that the snowmobile club had going on.
Mm-hmm. You know, and, and as far as us riding in town, you know, Pecotas is really the only business that we go into, and, you know, we got it marked, we run the alley, uh, the snow's thin, we will ride between the sidewalk and the street. You know, we don't groom it, it's just marked. Come across the Harriman Nielsen property, you know, sort of coming straight in. You know, and, and last year we tried being proactive and talking to you guys about running, instead of running on the asphalt, you know, go across the bridge, going through the, the old landfill area, trying to stay off the blacktop to get through town. You know, I'm also on the conservation board, so that, that was how we thought we would address that. You know, I'd like to see it so people could ride from where, you know, to the trail system or out of town. That's, you know, that's up to you guys. We try real hard to be proactive, you know, maybe next winter, before we go into winter, we need to put some letter to the editor, you know, because I would like to think that it isn't a club member that's the problem, it's, you know, it's somebody that isn't.
Sure.
And it's no different than speed or, you know, anybody that breaks the law, they don't, they aren't gonna listen to you anyway, you know. But, uh, you got anything? But, so. Now, I mean, we'll do our best to, you know, to work with you and try to keep issues, but some people are gonna complain.
Understood.
Over the years, as far as complaints, other than Sixth Street Southwest, I've had complaints from people that live on Twelfth Avenue, and the biggest complaint is because they do go across their driveways or, you know, some of them just don't want going on, don't want them going on their property. One of them, you know, is in Twelfth Avenue and in the third street area, by the ball line, and they go and cut across your yard and go, you know, go that way. That was one of the, you know, one of the issues in the past. And I know Sixth Street Southwest is another one. As far as actual snowmobilers, I don't think we've really had a lot of complaints other than this winter. I think we had some up around the trail area, up there by the gravel road that goes east and west, just south of the trail or something. We had some people that were, you know, I don't know, can't remember the exact, the exact what was going on around there in that area. Problem is, by the time we get there, you know, they're gone, and then how do you identify them? Because, you know, we just get a snowmobiler, you know, maybe it's yellow or whatever with, you know, whatever, kind of helmet or whatever, and it's like, you're guessing.
Those were the other fourteen snowmobiles out there.
Right. Uh, so what do you do? There was three of them that were stopped at Casey's, and I had seen them come up Highway sixty-five or whatever, and I can't remember the, exactly where they were at, but I basically told them, I said, "You can't go that route as far as," you know, I says, "If you need to go directly in and out of town, if there's a trail, you need to go and take off, you know, on the side of the trail or whatever." So, but, you know, that's about all you can do.
Did you say Bob?
Yeah, Bobby, yeah.
It's an emergency. Yeah, yeah. We need now.
You know, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, maybe we need to look at having designated routes, you know, some of the alleys, some, you know, and post it, just saying, this, this is the only way you can get, and get them going either out of town or up to the trail. You know, it's, it's just a thought, instead of banning them from town, it's waiting, so...
Would you say that your, that your club members pretty much have a, a route that they use anyway?
I do know the one member that lives in town, he was wanting to come, but he wasn't gonna be taking, but he talked about his designated route is one route out of town, and he runs Twelfth Street right out here to Olive Avenue, and he runs that only.
Yeah.
Because he wants to hit no other roads, no other paths, so that he doesn't affect other people.
I was just thinking that would probably help some of the non-club members to know...
Right. And that he kind of breaks a trail, he said, so that, then maybe other people will follow that trail and not make other trails, is kind of what his point was.
Some of the issue is before we got the trail going through town, you know, Twelfth Avenue was, was the way a lot of people got through town, you know, they went up and across, so. Now with the trail, if we get snow and get it groomed, and, you know, we should be able to draw people so they go straight through, especially as we start to develop the, the trail going east further, then, you know, hopefully we'll get them through and keep them going, so, yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll work for it however we have to, you know, to try to address the problem, but you guys know that we can't account for everyone.
I do know our club members are well aware of your city rules and ordinances and things, but we can't speak for people that aren't in our club, so.
Right.
We just know what our club members know. We aren't, we don't know about people.
Right.
We don't.
Right, exactly.
You know, when we have the fun run, we're gonna have to be a little more proactive and state, you know, the route through town, you know, if we're coming this way, so the people from outside of the community are, are aware of, you know, the issues going through Hampton.
Sure.
So, yep.
Questions?
I know there's several people in Twelfth Avenue between Fourth Street Northeast and Sixth Street Northeast that have helped the situation out by putting markers near yards. If there are, there are about three or four property owners that really got tired, then there is traffic going out that direction. And they really have helped the situation a lot by putting, well, somebody's just had a little mistake, so they're in reflectors on, and I think that's worked pretty well. So, we encourage people to, to do that if they have a situation with snowmobiles going over their property. We don't wanna see property damage, that's for sure.
Well, I think a lot of the unfortunate stuff that goes on, and I see a lot of smaller kids on snowmobiles riding around town, and it was a big, it's a big deal for them, but part of the problem is they get equated with this, with the snow, with the, with the group, because whether they belong or not, they're snowmobilers, so somebody's gonna say, "Well, they're part of the snowmobile group." And I've heard that a lot, a lot of people that I've talked to down to the ears.
Other questions or comments?
I would personally, I live on an alley, our access to, depending on how far property is through the alley, and I think it's dangerous, especially where I live, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but there's a lot of snowmobile traffic because we're half a block or a block south of the trail, but it seems to encourage a lot of people to come across Seventh Avenue Northeast from that alley on the south side, about as fast as they can go to jump the sidewalk. And my fear is that I'm gonna hit somebody, somebody even or someday, not knowing they're there, because by the time you realize there's somebody there, it's too late.
Right.
If we were gonna designate routes, speaking only as a, as a citizen, I would consider you have to go down the street, obey all the traffic laws, speed limits, and probably be a lot more visible to traffic. You wouldn't certainly necessarily have somebody backing out over the top of you per se. I mean, you know, if you park into a driveway in a garage and back out onto the street, you're gonna be a lot further away from them than I am, you know, but, just something to consider. But we've dealt with this issue for many different years off and on, over the years I should say. And I don't really believe that it's the snowmobile club's fault, but it's just guilt by association, like Steve said, they happen to be on a snowmobile, so these guys, if anyone wants to come and stand up and are willing to work with us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I certainly appreciate them coming to have the conversation with us because it's helpful to, I think, your cause, that you let people know that you're, you're trying to do the responsible thing and, and inform other, you know, even the riders that aren't part of your club where they should and shouldn't be, so. What's, Council, do we, do you guys wanna pursue a route, have the snowmobile club work with us on what a process could be done, a process like that would look like?
I think we could just set up a meeting with, with myself and maybe Mr. McRickers, we could talk about what a potential route would be, something that was done historically to Mason City, a lot of it's enforcement, but unfortunately, the only way to catch a snowmobile is to catch them when you're on a snowmobile as well. I mean, but they had two snowmobiles donated to their police department that they used as police vehicles and had the lights on them and all that stuff, but they were successful, they had proven to be that way, but, you know, that's obviously a little more money, I think, than...
Sure.
I'll tell them, ours, unless, of course, we give something donated, but, anyway, but the process may be, you know, just looking into it and putting it in the ordinance.
Yeah, Gary.
Um, if you're having a serious issue, some, during some snow, the DNR has officers that are designated with snowmobiles assigned to them, you know, David Downing would be who, and I, I've got better access than most people do, they, um, so we could maybe get, you know, somebody here and do a special enforcement, so. Whenever we have, you know, our fun runs, we gotta turn paperwork in, so they usually have somebody in the area, so. We haven't had too many issues, you know, outside of town with our club. There are other areas, so...
We've had traffic in the cemetery before, you know, and they, they will cause damage to stones as well.
I had complaints of people speeding down the trail, I mean, but he gets up there and like you said earlier, you know, they're gone, long gone, but...
Enforcement's tough.
How do you enforce it?
Yeah, it's, it's tough, and it's, like you said, you had the same type vehicle they have, you're not gonna go where they can go.
And you didn't, I, I like the idea of setting up a trail sys, or, you know, a system in, but you're still gonna have those that aren't gonna pay attention to it anyway, so it's gonna come down to enforcement once again.
Exactly.
Because those that don't pay attention to me, the paper or what the group decides is gonna be an enforcement issue.
If you go lay out a trail, it's not gonna be easy access to everybody.
You gotta realize...
As soon as you put it over here, there's five days of the year now, but...
And if you make just the roads, well, the roads are the first things that are cleared well, the snowmobilers don't wanna ride on the road, because these don't...
And they're gonna be jumping into somebody's...
They'd rather have the snow, so...
I agree with that, I was just looking at a safety aspect, because the last thing I wanna do is back over somebody.
Get a north-south trail right through the middle of town, get a deal, whatever. That's long process.
They still gotta get to it.
Yep.
So...
Yep. Well, I don't know, Doug, why don't you set up a meeting with, with the snowmobile folks and see if, see if you can come up with something to propose to council for, for that change in the ordinance.
Make sure we submit to it, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I think I'll allow you one, though. Okay.
Well, Luke, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else on that item, we'll move on. Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Go on, siblings, bro, call him.
Next is a discussion of requests for longer area inside city right-of-way on Nineteenth Avenue Northeast. I think you guys all supplied with letters and information that was mailed to me.
Yep. M-M-C.
Jeff and Beth Jakes.
V-I-C-K-E-R.
They've got a history of dealing with landscape issues following the Highway sixty-five project. I want to admit with them, from what I witnessed, there's a, there is a visible difference between their right-of-way and the rest of their property, and so I told them that I would bring it up to council for consideration on what to do. Ron has talked to Dale Lou on what might possibly be needed to rehabilitate that portion of their property back to what it was prior to the project. And so I went around talking about that a little bit.
Yeah, Dale took a look at his property today. He estimated it's an eight-foot by one-hundred-foot strip of, along Nineteenth Avenue Northeast. I asked him to, for a ballpark estimate, the mayor had asked me to contact him, invite him to the meeting, he wasn't able to attend, but to get an idea of how much it would cost to do what the Jakeses are requesting. Basically, he said to remove between three and six inches of dirt, replace with, with better dirt, seed and fertilize it. Material's about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, labor about five-hundred-and-fifty, so eight to nine-hundred dollars, he estimated.
What questions or comments do we have? Everybody have a chance to read the material? I also, I also did forward the, the information on to Diane and Dick being the closest geographically, I understand, may, may or may not be incorrect, or I misunderstood that, so, so I apologize for that, Craig. I was just thinking geographic wise, with Chris and Dick and Diane being closest, so I don't know if you guys have a chance to check into it all, but entertain any questions or comments on?
My car works, there's a whole lot to say, it's not as, I mean, mine's just a bit smaller. So, I mean, if you're gonna do it for one, you got a lot of properties.
Yeah, and what, like I said earlier, you can get up down the north end, you can come right on down to the south end, because the original, the first project that was done on that end was done, pretty much the same way. In fact, at the time when ours was released, there was sidewalks that was terrible shape, that lifted in some areas and down. I had it mine, had it ground down, and it's, I know, so today it's starting to lift back up again. Very poor, winning survey when they did the sidewalks, so that was a big horror story back then. You go, you have to trust what the DOT's gonna do, because they write the job, you know, and you have a retainer that's left over as they finish, it's supposed to fix things like that. And if we release, you know, if the retainer's released, we think that all the Punch West items are done, you have to go by what your architect, what your, your architects and your engineers and stuff say, that it's fine, what are you gonna do?
Okay.
I spoke with the Jakeses also after, after you did, and, and one thing that they expressed concern about was during the course of the project, while there was good black dirt available to go back in there, they made contact with the people on the project and the comment, and I understand your comments, Steve, but the comment of, well, that's what the specs are, sometimes the specs aren't good enough, but they made every effort to identify the problem before it happened or as it was happening. And it is, there is a major difference there. Whether we're gonna be faced with that all the way up and down Highway sixty-five, I, I don't think so, but I think they really, good faith effort, they have made every effort to, to make it work by watering, fertilizing, grass seeding, but the, the quality of the surface isn't there. I, I think we should replace it. I think they, during the project, identified very clearly it was gonna be a problem, and it wasn't going. Just sorry we missed it on the punch list, I mean, that's...
That's what they're for, Dick.
But I, I don't know that that would've made any difference, because the comment would've been that, okay, that's what the specs are, I don't know if they would've been a correct spec.
Yeah, I mean, the, the specs had a tolerance level of certain sizes of rocks and, which, you know, was used in, you know, at the time, Doug and I talked about it, and Jakeses were talking about it, and basically, the, the dirt that was brought in met the tolerance levels. You know, was it as good as what was removed? Maybe not, probably not, but, so, it was a situation where the material that was being used met the tolerance levels, so they couldn't very well make the contractor bring in something better, but it's, that's where we are.
Yeah, I just, you know, with, the next item on the agenda being nuisance offenders, I just, I just think it's hard as a city to maintain credibility. You have this nice-looking property that looks worse now because of a project that the city and the DOT went through and did, and I, I just think it's hard to go after properties that don't look as nice when the city goes through, the state goes through and does a project and makes a property look worse.
I think additional comment is, they're not asking for a fix on the Highway sixty-five side, which they're sharing with all the other property owners on Highway sixty-five, they're asking for this section on Nineteenth. So they're, they're not happy, they understand that, so...
Yeah, and they, and they have, in my discussion with them, they told me they have spent a conservative estimate of over a thousand dollars of their own money trying to rehabilitate the project, or rehabilitate the property to back to what it was before the project. They reiterated to me several times that they're not looking to improve their property to what it was before the project, they just wanna get back to what it was when the project was started. So, any other comments? Questions? Okay. What do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna do it forward, or do you want, we put it up for a vote? And get a form of the estimate? I believe we should do that. Any other thoughts? Okay. If there's nothing else, that's what we'll do then. Okay. Next item then is discussion of penalties for habitual nuisance offenders. Discuss this at the last, last council meeting? Craig, you brought this item up.
Yeah, I thought we had talked about getting the city attorney involved, and just curious what come up? I haven't heard anything about it.
Bob, do you wanna, we, we visit with city attorney, is he, you talked about doing first offense, second offense, third offense, as a scheduled violation or penalty violation?
Correct. And I believe, continue to believe it as, if I remember correctly, as a criminal instead of the civil because of what you've gotta go through, if I remember? Is that correct?
I think so.
So that's what, I mean, basically, kind of what we had looked at.
But he's, he's suggesting doing that, putting a scheduled fine for violation?
Part of my point then, Chief, was that I think that it would save you guys a lot of time, instead of chasing these over at the eleventh hour, miraculously things get cleaned up. And that's part of it, I think the nuisance program is very effective, but we're always gonna have something that doesn't meet spec, but I, I just don't think that you guys need to spend that much time running around and checking if you have, it's gotta take, instead of a monitoring, doesn't it?
I know, the way that he's talking, I'm not sure, I mean, what, what'll happen is we're gonna still have to go through, we aren't gonna be saving any time.
Okay.
Well, what it's gonna do is that person that you do give the notice to, you know, and if it's a repeat offender, it's like, okay, you got five days to get cleaned up, 'cause that's what we give you. And actually, what, what the city attorney has told me is that we don't actually go there on the fifth day, we have to wait until the sixth day in order to give, you know, in order to give them a citation, and then we go and give them a citation. Well, if they've had another, you know, violation within that time, and the way I'm getting is if they've been ticketed before, then they get another ticket, or, you know, then it goes to a second offense. We have a lot of them that we'll go and give notices to. One might come in the spring, might end up giving another one in the summer, and we might end up giving them another one in the fall, and they usually get it done within that five days or whatever, but it's always, you know, so I don't know...
So there'd be no ticket?
And I don't know what we can do to, to change that.
Because you, you have to give them a notice to evade the problem. So you give them reasonable time, the court says...
Well, we don't have to give them an extension after you've given the notice.
Right, that's right, yeah.
That's right. And I understand the point, we talked about the other meeting too, Chief, is that, you know, some of these things do take time to get cleaned up, but you know what? They didn't just get thrown there, all at once, else it will be there.
Right.
So it took time to get it there, it does take time to get it cleaned up, but I, I say that I maintain that that's not our problem.
Right.
If you had the five days, that was the reasonable time limit that we agreed on as a council in past years, that, that was the acceptable timeframe. We met with the city attorney then. I think we need to adhere to that rule and see what happens.
I don't have a problem with that. Most of the people we deal with, they have it done in five days.
Well, I think that's where you're gonna catch the habitual offenders that Craig's trying to go after is, is folks who aren't getting it done in five days, and, you know, it's, it's kinda ironic, because there was, there was one situation where there was a medical issue, so we gave them, you know, the extra time to go and get something done, and then it still didn't get done anyway, but that's been taken care of in other ways. But anyway, do you have any suggestions what we can do? You're the one that deals with it, not me.
I don't, other than the fact of, you know, like you said, we just adhere to the five days, it's like, okay, you know, you've got five days.
Um, most people, it might be a refrigerator, it might be a stove or whatever that they set out. Um, there's one, one particular residence that I've seen, a mattress, a hot spring. Been keeping an eye on it just to see how long it's gonna be there, you know, giving them, you know, like a week or whatever to go and get rid of it. Garbage man coming, I think it's been there a week, so. Probably will be writing up a notice for it, whatever, they'll have five days to get rid of it, and I'm pretty sure it'll be gone in five days. Um, we've got a lot of people like that and then there's just a handful that, you know, well, can you give me an extension? Okay, so how much, how much do you need? And, you know, sometimes we get it done, sometimes we don't, um, but.
I would, I would think, based on what I'm hearing, the answer might already be in the ordinance and that's just asking.
Right.
You know, the chief adhered to the, adhered to the five days that's, that's written in the ordinance. Um, you know, and if that's the collective council direction, then I think the answer's already there. I don't know if, uh, I think we can always add in a graduated penalty.
I can't imagine that idea. Yeah, I mean, for the ones that have been ticketed before. Now, the only thing is, I think Mike's probably thinking that you have to have twice within a year. So the ones that had one a year or two ago and have another one again and they don't do anything, I don't think that we can go and charge them with a, you know, with a second offense. Bring this up. Tended to brought to my attention before, we, we, a separate issue, but it'll run parallel, you'll see, but we have a warning book for dogs. How many warnings do we give them before they're actually cited? Whether they're at large or barking or causing a disturbance, how many times do you do that? Maybe twice the third time they get the ticket. Okay, does it take three times to, to prove that we're right? No. But my point is that, uh, maybe after you've given one person a notice for property and they, they don't comply, that you don't get any extensions.
Right, or I'm thinking if they do it in the fall, they turn around and do it in the winter, and they do it in the spring, there's your first, second and third.
That's habitual. But I mean, it's a repetitive process. But the only thing is, unless there's something else Mike comes up with, we have to have given them a citation in order for it to be a second offense. From what I am, from what I am understanding. It isn't a notice, you give one notice and then you have to give them a second notice, you know, type deal where we write them because we have to give them a second notice. Now, you know, I'm not sure, how does your deal work with the grass? That you basically give a notice in the spring and if it gets, then they get a ticket?
One, one notice per year and then, uh, we have done the ticket thing, we put down the tickets and now I come here and write tickets for them, or I find you could.
That would be the only other thing, is if we go and somehow or other, Mike, we draft something like that up that you give one notice, you know, in a year and if you have, uh, you know, some sort of nuisance on your property within that year after you've gotten that notice, then, then you get a ticket, but that would be something that we definitely have to look into, especially with it being, I think, probably being so, it's a criminal offense instead of a civil. I guess even myself, I was thinking more than once, um, to constitute habitual, but I thought that, you know, we seem to be chasing the same properties continually, or property owners, if you will, but there would be a better way to streamline this. And I think right now, what I'd like to see tried personally would be the, the no extensions. And adhere to the code and see what we come up with that. If it doesn't work, then we can go back and revisit it. Let's try enforcing what we've got on the books. Maybe that'll wake some up, not most of the people we've discovered have to, the officer goes to the door, there's compliance, you know, there's people who are more than willing to work with you and have proven that they will, but some just don't get it, Chief.
Right. Well, I think, I, I think you'd find too that most people, you know, when they get the knock on the door, that they're, they're embarrassed that they're, they're having to happen and so they wanna, they wanna be in compliance as quick as possible rather than some of the other ones, you know, who wanna, really wanna push the envelope and that's what you're, that's what you're hinting at there. So I, I would agree with Craig, I mean, I don't know what other council thought or input would be, but I would agree with, with Craig that, um, you know, we just push the enforcement and scale back on the warnings, I guess.
It's not unlike the snowmobiles, it only affects the ones that aren't complying.
Right.
Those that apply to, comply with the rules don't have any issues.
Right. Right. Anything else? Question, comment?
One of the other things, Greg, that you mentioned the other day was, you know, possibly a local step program. It was kind of in the same package, but Ron, I've already talked to you a little bit about a possible extension or dealing with, uh, repeat offenders. Is this an appropriate time to, to bring that up or?
I would, I would say it's a separate agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
We can certainly bring it up, uh, the next meeting. I would say, I would say it's a separate, separate item.
Okay. Yeah, the, the parallel was getting after repeat offenders that are no license. So, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Ron and Doug and Michael go to check.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I think that's, that's, that's similar along the lines of, you know, nailing down repeat offenders, but, uh, you know, you're talking about more traffic.
Yes.
Related things. If there's nothing else on nuisance, then, I think that's the direction, Chiefs.
All right. Can tell you, we had one that we did get a ticket and went to court and found guilty and so they need to clean it up. I can't remember what the time limit is, Captain Hill was the one that had it and, uh, they need to take care of it and, uh, or else they have to stay alone, so.
Yeah, we have one other question, Chief, maybe you can help me with this. Would it, once our process is, if we cite them, we go to court, it's magistrate court, would it be appropriate to ask the magistrate's opinion? What would be habitual, if you will, or what would be acceptable? Because it lives and dies right there on that dock, you know, but they, they're in their court or their court.
Most of the time, when we're talking about public intoxes or anything else, um, actually even with public intoxes, they have to be represented by an attorney in order to get a first or a second offense or a third offense or whatever. Uh, if they go in there and represent themselves, uh, and it happens to slip through the county attorney's, you know, uh, deal that this might be a second offense or whatever, uh, they could have three or four second offenses before it actually would go and, and step on up. So I, I, I really think that she's gonna look at if she's gonna want convictions on those, you know, like on a citation versus the, you know, like we're talking about as far as giving a notice.
Okay.
I did ask her, I mean, there's no harm in asking, but that's what I'm, my, my thought is, is that that's the way she's gonna go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else for the good of the cause? If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn at 6:40.